Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining this Board of Trustees meeting of Lansing Community College. It is our organizational meeting for the first of this year. And so, at this particular time, I'd just like to give a little bit of instructions. There's going to be a ceremonial that's going to take place, oath of office, and we have trustee elects of four people. So it may take a little bit longer than normal and usual. I just ask for your patience and your kindness. And then I also ask that if you have your cell phones, that you will put those on silence or that you will put those on vibrate. We don't want to, you know, disturb the moment of those who will be taking oath of office. Also, if you need to use the lavatory, they're right out here, right out that door, men and women, and I'm trying to figure out what else, just asking for your patience as we honor the trustees elects tonight, okay? All right. With that, we're going to call this meeting to order. Ms. Duncan, will you call the role?
Terri Frazier.
Here.
Noel Garcia.
Here.
Hope Lovell.
Present.
Angela Matthews.
Here.
Robert Proctor, Chatham Taylor.
Here.
Ashonda Thomas.
Thank you. Trustee Thomas, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States and to the following oath of the Constitution of one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
Before we proceed, I'd like to read the Lansing Community College land acknowledgement. Lansing Community College occupies the ancestral, traditional, and contemporary lands of the Anishnaabik Three Fires Confederacy of Ojibwe, Odawa, and the Potawatomi people. In particular, the city of Lansing and LCC reside on land ceded in the 1819 Treaty of Saginaw. Now we will move to the oath of office ceremony. If I could ask trustee elects Frazier, Garcia, Lovell, and Taylor to please take a seat next to their judge as we begin our swearing in ceremony. And as they do that, I will read the Michigan College, Community College Act requires that each person elected to the Board of Trustees of a community college district shall submit their acceptance of oath, I'm sorry, acceptance of office and affidavit of eligibility with the Secretary of the Board of Trustees. Additionally, every elected trustee to the Board of any community college district shall take an oath of affirmation. All our trustee elects have filed the necessary documents with the executive assistant liaison to the board, and this evening, we will have each ceremonial take the oath. We are honored this evening to have with us the Honorable Shawna L. Dunnings, the Honorable Molly Hennessy Greenwald, and the Honorable Kristen Simmons, who's on her way. If not, we always got a Plan B. So Lansing Community College welcomes them. Let's give them a hand. Now, if you would allow me to, ladies and gentlemen, let me read some of the credentials, the esteemed credentials of our judges that are here tonight. So the Honorable Judge Dunnings, if the Chief Judge of the Probate Court and the Chief Judge pro tempore of the Ingham County Circuit Court focusing on family law and probate matters. She presides over the Phoenix Treatment Court, supporting youth affected by sexual abuse and trafficking. Elected to the Probate Court in 2018, Judge Dunnings previously served as the Assistant Friend of the Court and Attorney Referee in Eden County, as well as in various roles within Ingham County's court system. She has over a decade of experience in private practice. Active in professional organizations, she sits on the Board of Directors to the Michigan Probate Judges Association and is a member of the State Bar of the Michigan Probate and Estate Planning Section Council. Judge Dunnings is also involved with the Lansing Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, the Lansing, East Lansing Chapter of Links, and is a lifetime member of the NAACP. That's Judge Dunnings. Moving on to another esteemed judge, we have Judge, the Honorable Judge Hennessy Greenwald, which was appointed by Governor Gretchen Whitmer, Big Gret, to the 54B District Court bench in East Lansing. Previously, she served as a Michigan Supreme Court Commissioner, researching legal issues and providing recommendations on civil criminal and family law matters. Judge Greenwald has also worked as an Assistant Prosecuting Attorney for the Ingham County, as well as law clerk for the Michigan Supreme Court and the Abud Law Firm. She earned her law degree from the Michigan State University College of Law and holds a Bachelor of Arts from Boston College, along with a Master of Arts from the University of Wisconsin. Let's give Judge Hennessy Greenwald a hand. When you have honor in front of you, you gotta do it right. Next. Okay. I don't see if she's on her way, so we will move forward here. And I'm going to read her bio, just in case. We have Judge Kristen D. Simmons. She was appointed to the 54A District Court by Governor Gretchen Whitmer in September 2019, and she earned a bachelor's degree in political science from Hampton University and her jurors doctorate from the Thomas A. Cooley Law School. Since 2009, Judge Simmons has been an active member of the Lansing Community. Before becoming a judge, she worked as the litigation manager for the Michigan Department of Corrections and held various roles, including Assistant Attorney General Ooh, and taught legal writing and business law as an adjunct professor at Lansing Community College. Launch a legal clinic. So this is how we are going to proceed with the oath of office ceremony. First, we would like to ask the Honorable Shawna Dunnings to step forward and administer the oath of office to trustee-elect Terrence Frazier and then trustee-elect Chatham Taylor.
I, Terrence Frazier.
Affirm.
Thoroughly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duty.
That I will faithfully discharge the duty.
Of the office of the member of the Board of Trustees of Lansing Community College.
Of the office of the member of the Board of Trustees for Lansing Community College.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Hello. Repeat after me, please raise your right hand. I.
I, Chatham Taylor.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of the member of the Board of Trustees of Lansing Community College.
Of the office of the member of the Board of Trustees of Lansing Community College.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you, Judge Dunnings. And now, we would have the Honorable Molly Hennessy Greenwald to step forward and administer the oath of office to trustee-elect Noel Garcia Jr.
Please raise your right hand. I, Noel Garcia.
I, Noel Garcia.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this.
The Constitution of this.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of the member of the Board of Trustees.
Of the office of the member of the Board of Trustees.
Of my empty feeling.
Of my empty feeling.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Next, I would like to invite the Honorable Shawna Dunnings back up to step forward to administer the oath of office to trustee-elect Lovell, I'm sorry, Hope Lovell. And repeat after me. I.
I, Hope Lovell.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of the member of the Board of Trustees.
Of the office of the member of the Board of Trustees.
Of Lansing Community College.
Of Lansing Community College.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen. And can we give all of our judges, as well as our trustee elects a hand? All right, here's the good part, here's the fun part. We would like, if you can, judges, our judges to remain. We like, we would like to take some photos. So again, everyone, if you will please be patient with us, it is greatly appreciated. And then after that, we will have photos with trustees elects. Also, this is a moment in time, if you want family photos, we will definitely, you know, be patient with that. So, right now, let's do the judges. Judges, okay? Let's do the judges. Follow the chair. Follow the chair.
I'm sorry.
I know.
Oh, I can go.
Right now.
Okay, this name is Trey Howard. Yeah, well. I'm here. I'm the boss.
Get her off. Okay, get out of there. Yeah. Sounds like a thing. Well, that's something.
I don't want you to get in. Hey, tell me, would you always grab?
One, two, three. That's my thing.
So, why?
Your glasses?
I think, oh, yeah.
Yes, over there. Oh, that woman, woman, Kevin's taking a bridge.
Tyler, see here, your grand love.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's good to have you. Good, thank you. I saw you doing that. Okay.
Don't admit.
Cover all the bases, don't you, Kevin? Brian too.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience and for allowing all of the particulars with the oath of office ceremony to take place. We truly appreciate that. And I would like to thank the judges, Judge, the Honorable Judge Dunning's, Judge Hennessy Greenwald, and also Judge Christine Simmons. She had a jury trial that ran over a little bit, and so Judge Dunning stepped in for her, but they all worked together. So let's give them a hand for lending their time tonight. And also, we want to congratulate our new trustees to the LCC Board of Trustees. Trustee Frazier. Trustee Mal and trustee Taylor. All right. So at this particular time, we are, if you are following with us, I was stalling for you. We are moving on to agenda, it's under four, but E, recognition of family and guests of the trustees. So if any of the trustees would like to recognize your family and your guests, please feel free to do so at this particular moment.
Good evening, everyone. I want to just recognize my, my family, my wife Nikki, my two daughters, Malia MJ, and my father Clarence Frazier. Only two could attend today because they are out running around and serving the community, but happy to be here and serving. So thank you so much.
Evening. So I have my beautiful mother here waving, and I have my dad Odell and my beautiful daughter Adjele here. She came all the way here from school, and she has to drive back tonight, so she's a senior. Yes, very, very smart at the University of Michigan. Yes, and I, I have several other people who left, but I also want to recognize the fact that our apostles were here, Apostle Benson and Pastor Jan Benson. So, but thank you for coming.
Well, so when I was appointed a year ago and we had to open the office, my family was upset that I didn't invite them here except for my two boys. So I invited them and they've since left, but I had a surprise for my sister too. So my, my two sons, Austin and Garrett, were here. My father, Noel Garcia, the senior, was here. My sister Elizabeth and her husband Bob, and then her children, my nieces Stephanie and Marissa, and then Andy, my nephew. The surprise I had for my sister was she turned 62 days, two weeks ago, and I forgot her birthday and I'm in the doghouse. I was going to have you guys sing happy birthday to her to get out of the doghouse. But anyway, she'll watch this later, I guess. Thank you very much.
Well, I would love to acknowledge my wonderful husband, Donald Lavelle, my two beautiful daughters, Joy and Faith Lavelle. I know Faith is a little late for basketball practice, so I appreciate you deferring practice to be here for me. And my wonderful mom, who traveled from the Detroit area to be here tonight, even through this crazy wind and weather. So thank you so much. And I believe my son, Donald III, is online. He is, he's in school in Massachusetts, and so he said he would join virtually. So, son, if you hear this, you better be online watching. But thank you all.
As this concludes the oath of office ceremony, we do have some community leaders here. We have Commissioner Miles Johnson that's here. Lansing, a commissioner from the Lansing Revision Board that was here, Lori Simon, but she had to leave. So we do appreciate our community leaders coming to Lansing Community College, you know, to take part in this and just to lend support. So thank you so much. Okay. At this particular point, we are going to move forward to agenda item number five. However, if you want to leave, family and guests, feel free to do so, because now we're going to move forward with our agenda. And, and we're still in the meeting, so if you will silence your phones or put your phones on vibrate, we would greatly appreciate that. Thank you so much. Agenda item number five. Is there a motion to approve the December 16, 2024 Regular Board of Trustees Meeting? Thank you, trustee Thomas.
Support.
Thank you, trustee Garcia. It has been moved by trustee Thomas and supported second by trustee Garcia to approve the December 16, 2024 Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Vanita, please call the row.
Terrence Frazier.
Aye.
Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Noel Garcia.
Aye.
Angela Matthews.
Aye.
LaShonda Thomas. Chatham Taylor.
Aye.
Robert Proctor. Motion, carry.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number six, additions and or deletions to the agenda. Colleagues, hearing none.
Madam Chair, you asked me prior to this meeting whether I want to remove anything. I have some questions. They don't necessitate taking anything off the agenda. It would probably be more expeditious if I just ask them as we go through. Find the first one. Course fees, I believe this is going to go to the provost. In those areas where course fees for last year are indicated, but there are no course fees for the current year, do I assume correctly that those courses no longer exist?
Sorry, they either don't exist or we don't have them on the schedule anymore. Can you give me an example of what you're looking at, please? Want to make sure that we're correct.
Can you help me? Where do they start?
Page 40. Yeah, if you look at example on page 45, you go down about 10 spots, management to 34, diversity in the workplace. Had a course fee last year, and there's no course fee this year, but they removed it.
That's one of those that I highlighted. The course no longer will be taught or?
They just don't have a course fee associated with it. So they may have had a software that was attached to the course and they're not using it anymore.
On the next page, 46, the top three, same thing, no course fee for proposed course fee for this year.
I am going to ask Dean Berger to come up because it's a consortium program, and the consortium moved from LCC hosting it to West Shore hosting it. And I want to make sure she answers the question for you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So LCC participates in what's called consortium programs. These are programs that are too expensive for a school to take on independently, because an employer might only need two or three employers in the Lansing area. So multiple community colleges get together, and we offer one program that all the community colleges can participate in. The NDXT program was hosted by LCC, and it's now moved to West Shore Community College. So we still offer the degree and our students to go there, but West Shore Community College is now hosting that, so they established the course fees for that course.
That'd be true of the American Sign Language program. Those are the ones at the top of the next page.
It's a different Dean.
That's on page. You're talking about page 47?
Correct.
It just means that they don't have a course fee anymore. So they used to have one, they don't have one.
That's all I had with regard to the course fees.
Let me, let me call a point of order. If there are any further discussions regarding course fees, I do believe the president is going to be addressing those. And so what we will need to do is we would need to follow the rule of that when I get to that point. And I ask, are there any items that the colleagues would like to withdraw from the consent agenda? Then let us move in that accordingly. But thank you, Dr. trustee Proctor, for those questions. And I think that others will probably be able to be answered during the president's report. So let's just continue to move down the agenda with limited public comment on my number seven. With limited public comment regarding agenda items, agenda items only for limited public comment, you will have three minutes. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, thank you. We're moving on to agenda item number eight, the president's report, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, Chair Matthews. Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Before I launch into, I have a few things I want to share. I'm so excited about tonight. Chair Matthews, I think I could make a suggestion. I think we could continue questions and answers about course fees when, before the adoption of the consent agenda, even without removing it from the consent agenda. And I do have some things to say about that, so, and hopefully, and everyone is here who can answer questions. So hello, new trustees. This is very exciting. Patrick, could you run the first couple of my slides? I gotta. I want to, first of all, welcome trustee Frazier and trustee Garcia for returning to the board. This was the first swearing in. It's great to have you back. And welcome trustees Lavelle and Taylor to your first meeting. Get used to having your picture taken, okay? We are so happy you're here, and we're going to have a great year. So congratulations. Looking forward to the orientation sessions that we're setting up, and we're going to have a great, great year. At the beginning of my president's report, new trustees, everybody knows I do this. I highlight our president's report, which is online, available for anybody to look at. I do want to note a new format for the, the president's report. We always organize it along the strategic planning categories. So the table of content, contents now corresponds with our new strategic plan. And it's there for your reading pleasure, and you can look at it leisure, at your leisure. But I do want to highlight a few things that are in here. On page nine, we often track attendance at major college events. And on page nine, you'll see that at our 114th Police Academy graduation, we had 450 attendees. Many of our trustees were there. That was great. On page 13, you will see a spread about the launch of the new Office of Empowerment website. Dr. Dan and her team have worked to have a Dr. Dan and her team have worked to have a completely refreshed website for the Office of Empowerment. That's on page thirteen. And on page twenty-five, there's a feature about hosting the MSU advising team to our east campus to help with some connections between Michigan State University and LCC East. These are available online in a PDF format and a flipping book. So, before I do the rest of my oral report, Chair Matthews and I discussed about an item that I reported on in December. LCC and our colleagues are engaged in some very innovative and important programming for incarcerated individuals in our, in our community. And Dean Bo Garcia, but particularly Lee Gardner, who's the director of our Job Training Center, is going to come forward and share a little status update about our, our current programming for incarcerated individuals in our community. So, I will turn things over to you, Lee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. Good evening, Chair Matthews, Dr. Robinson and the board. Thank you for having me. As Dr. Robinson mentioned, my name is Lee Gardner. I'm the director of the Job Training Center. I was very happy to hear that you wanted to hear more about what we're doing in the Job Training Center, specifically for the incarcerated and released citizens. So, please let me know if you have any questions as I try to get through this in five minutes. All right. So, first and foremost, I want to just give a brief overview of the Job Training Center to help you understand kind of where we fit into Lansing Community College. So, we're a part of the Community Education and Workforce Development Division under Dean Bo Garcia's leadership. And what we offer is non-credit, short-term, credential-bearing training opportunities for community members. Specifically, we're focused on those in the community that are underserved. So, we're helping refugees, the unemployed and underemployed, disconnected students, so folks that came to LCC and dropped out or left and didn't come back. That's another audience. And the newest audience we've been able to work with is incarcerated individuals, similarly citizens. So, the Job Training Center, we've really got two main goals. First and foremost, we want to provide job readiness training. So, we want to help people get high-wage entry-level positions, specifically those that do not require an associate's degree or formal education. And then secondarily, we want to get a positive and supportive interaction with LCC and higher education. With this being our intended audience, oftentimes, they don't really see themselves as belonging in a higher education space. And so, we're really just trying to provide that supportive environment so maybe downstream they can see themselves being successful here. Specifically with the programs that we're talking about tonight with incarcerated and released citizens, that all came about through an MEDC Talent Action Team grant that the Job Training Center received. We received a grant that ends in March twenty-five, and that is $261,000 that the Job Training Center receives specifically to provide a talent pipeline for the manufacturing industry. And in line with the Job Training Center's mission, we wrote that for that grant specifically to help and provide free training for underserved populations. So, we started this project working with industry employers that are in the manufacturing space. And we just needed to determine what are those entry-level positions that they're looking for and that are in demand that don't require that education. And there's two that were foundational across all, all industry partners. It was a material handler position, which is essentially those at warehouses that are moving around product. They're doing the shipping and receiving, they're working the forklift. And then we have maintenance technicians. And those folks are installing, repairing, and maintaining equipment on manufacturing floors. And you see the data there. Both of those are pretty decent-paying jobs, anywhere from nineteen to twenty-six dollars an hour, depending on the position. And they're significantly in demand in our area. And those numbers you see there are expected to grow six percent over the next ten years as well. So, what we did with, with that information about the material handler position that is so in demand in our industry, or in that industry, we created a modern warehousing program within Indio County Jail. And so, what we're doing within the jail is we are training folks for that material handler role. They start with self-guided modules. And we have six of them that they go through and it equates to one hundred and twenty hours of self-paced curriculum that they're going through. And that is all done independently, but also with the assistance of an onsite Job Training Center, LCC employee lab technician. That is their twenty to twenty-five hours a week to help the inmates through the program. Once they complete all those modules, and they do so in a satisfactory manner, they're eligible for a in-person boot camp. Where we go into the jail and we instruct them for two weeks, and they get their Certified Logistics Associate credential, which is the leading credential in warehouse. And you see a couple of numbers up there just showing the success and demand we've seen so far. Thus far, we've had two hundred and thirty-eight inmates start the program, which was, kind of blew my mind as far as expectations for, for the demand that we're seeing. And then we've been able to offer one in-person cohort thus far. That was in December that President Robinson was referring to. We had nearly an eighty percent credential and exam pass rate on first attempt. Again, another sign that it's successful. And we're expecting to have another in-person cohort in February and March as well. I really want to emphasize also, not only what we're doing in the jail, but what we're doing at campus for released citizens. It's a very important part of the program as well. So, for those that have been released, we're offering a three-week boot camp at West Campus in modern warehousing as well. So, we had, with that demand, two hundred and thirty-nine inmates starting the program. Obviously, many people are going to get released before they can get to that in-person boot camp at the jail. They all get my business card. They all get an LCC flyer. And they can reach out to us and they can do this in person at our West Campus. We're finishing up our very first cohort. Those pictures you see up there are the cohort that's finishing this week to get their CLA. And we're reserving at least half seats for released inmates. We have a ten-seat capacity in that current cohort. You see, and eight of them are released citizens that came from Indio County. As far as what we're doing for them post-program, it's not just about giving them the instruction. It's about the supportive services that we want to offer in the handholding after the program so that they can continue to be successful with that education they receive. There's three points I want to make here. First is employment services with Michigan Works. We have partnered very strongly with Michigan Works on this program. They also have MEDC TAT funding that they're using. And so, we brought them out for lunch and learns. We had one last week. They talked about all of their services. Everyone became clients of Michigan Works. They're coming out Friday for a resume and interview workshop that we're going to have at West Campus. And we're planning a job fair for early March, where we're going to have at least eight or nine local employers, whilst they have their table for LCC admissions, prior learning, Michigan Works, so that they can see all the supportive resources that we have here at LCC. Secondly, I mentioned a little closer to the beginning that the second position that the grant is funding is training from maintenance technician. It's that higher-level position that pays a bit better. Those are stackable credentials. And so, we're offering that starting in February as well. And we're reserving seats for released inmates for that program as well. So, we've got about four or five that are currently going through modern warehousing that already have seats in that February. If they like what they're doing, they want to keep going. So, they're going straight from one to another to get as many credentials as they can. And then lastly, credential, the credit through prior learning here at LCC. These programs are built to be credit-bearing if they go through our credit, or through our prior learning process. So, we include OSHA thirty and other credentials that there is credit-bearing equivalencies to. So, if they want to continue their education, they've already got to step in that right direction as well. And then I know I'm out of time. So, just with this last slide, all I really want to say is we're going to continue to do this good work. So, we received that first grant through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And we've received a second grant that's taking us all the way through this year and through half of twenty-six. We're going to be offering the same programs, both in the jail as well as West Campus, the same amount of boot camps. But then we're also going to expand on the credentials that we're offering to include even more in-demand in the industry. Thank you. And any questions?
Thank you, sir. You're in the first cohort, so you may not have an answer for the question I'm about to ask. What employability data do you have, if any?
Yeah. I don't have any employability data that I can share today. But one, one reason that we really wanted to do this in the manufacturing space is that that industry amongst all of them in our region are more open to the concept of hiring released citizens. And so, we're working with them upfront with Michigan Works. They know that the folks that are going to be at that, that job fair are going to be released citizens. They know what we're dealing with. And they have agreed to vet them, to interview them if they think that they are strong candidates. But the nature of these two positions is they are so in demand that the industry can't be choosy, essentially. And so, they've really agreed to take a look at our candidates.
Thank you.
Yep.
Trustee Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I may have missed this, but what are the requirements to get involved in?
Our only requirements at all are that you enroll. Honestly, we are, you don't even need to have a GED in order to get a material handler position. So, it really is the perfect position for this audience.
Also, how many companies do you have lined up?
We have about eight or nine right now. Anywhere from Amazon to Altium, who's still looking to hire this year. Bridgewater, there are a lot of large employers, interesting.
Thank you. I love this program right here. Thank you. Thank you. I concur. I really like this program. And so, give me just a feel of how are you all measuring success? So, kind of what are any of your target KPIs that you are kind of shooting for?
Yeah. So, first and foremost, I would say credentialing pass rate. We, we want them to be able to put this on their resume, not just say that they attended class at LCC for three weeks, but to have industry-recognized credentials and certifications that they can take to an employer. And with that eighty percent pass rate on first try, we're certainly headed in the right direction. They just finished the OSHA thirty. And similarly, we had ninety percent that got that OSHA thirty card. And so, to me, that's, that's first and foremost. They need to be able to put this on their resume and have credentials, because they don't have any formal education. So, what I've been telling them in the classroom is essentially we want to give you as many credentials as we can to help overlook any record they have or any, anything like that. And, and that's really what's driving them. So, that would be first and foremost is just that success rate. Secondarily, once we get through this first cohort and we can have the employment fair and things, we will definitely be looking at job placement rates, how many we can partner with Michigan Works to get jobs within a few months.
That's great. So, you mentioned that there are several employers who are lined up. Are they approaching this from the standpoint or thinking about like maybe any type of special supports that these individuals may need to stay employed so that we see that they're retaining these positions?
Yeah. So, one of the great things about how we went into this program from the start is Michigan Works has been a true partner. They've been there from step one. And what's really nice about this is my contact at Michigan Works is also the manufacturing business partner at Michigan Works. So, he is working hand-in-hand with the employers. I'm working hand-in-hand with the participants. And so, there are a lot of incentives even that Michigan Works can give the employers if they hire somebody coming through this program, not only to help that employee need, but to help the company feel comfortable with that life.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thomas?
I was kind of going there too. They're like soft skills taught, or you know, how to handle situation and different things.
Yeah. So, we, we had started with that. That, that was originally part of the program with the folks that are actually in the jail. We didn't have enough funding to do that this first time around. It's something with the renewed grant that we're going to make part of the modules going forward.
Thank you.
Yep.
The quick question, Mr. Gardner. So, how would you, would you celebrate the completion of your program?
Well, that's a great question, but I haven't had a ton of time to think about. But we are, the, the jail itself has abided LCC to a graduation celebration that they're going to have in spring. And they want LCC to attend, Dr. Robinson. And that's going to be to celebrate not only the completers of the program, but also their GED completers. So, it'd be kind of all of their education graduates together. And that means a lot to all of the participants that are going through the program. For us, I've got to say, I feel like we're celebrating them every day. And I don't mean that to sound cheesy, but we're in there having lunch with them almost every day. We're talking to them. They love being there. And so, I think alone, just having that job fair, having Michigan Works come out, they feel seen, they feel appreciated, and they're really enjoying the process.
Additional questions?
Thank you so much, Director Gardner. I asked, I asked Lee to keep his presentation to five minutes, because I knew you all would have questions. And Chair Matthews, I want to thank you for the invitation. Great work that Director Gardner and Dean Garcia are doing. Thank you so much. Things additionally, before the end of my oral report, Chair Matthews. First has to do with some of our educational offerings outside of the Community College District. The LCC offers, this is particularly for the new trustees. LCC offers courses and K-12 dual enrollment outside of our Community College District. And what you see here is a map I made when I first came here four and a half years ago. You'll learn this pretty quickly, but not every part of the state of Michigan is in a Community College District. And we are bordered to our west, north, and east with counties and communities that are not in a Community College District. So, we've been offering programming in Livingston County. Currently, we lease a space at Parker Middle School in Howell to service Livingston County, which is, again, not in any Community College District. And as you see my little map here, Livingston County is surrounded by other community colleges, Washtenaw to the south, Oakland and Mott and Delta, in addition to Lansing. So, we were notified this fall that our lease would not be renewed in Howell. And so, our Space Management Review Team, which we call the SMART Team, has presented me just this last Friday with a detailed analysis of our current options. Provost Welch, CFO Willsky, Dr. Glasgow, Dr. McCursie, Tim Martz, and Dr. Samuel are all on that team. And just for a little bit of level-setting in terms of our, you know, more than ten thousand students, we have about a hundred and fifty-three students in, in Livingston County. So, the options that are, that I have yet to look through involve purchasing, leasing, or leveraging existing partnerships to serve the out-of-district students in Livingston County based on a, on detailed enrollment, financial, and facilities analysis. So, that, that recommendation is fresh on my desk as of Friday. And I just want to let the trustees know about that. We'll bring you more information about that, but wanted to let you know that. Next, and this is what I want to talk about, the course fees. And from a procedural's point of view, Chair Matthews, you could always take it off the agenda if you wanted to vote on it separately. But I think maybe Trustee Proctor's intention was he had some questions that, and if they were answered, they wouldn't need to come off. So, here's, here's a little bit of information about course fees. Trustee Proctor and the, and the existing trustees who were here before have been through this before. But it occurred to me, when I was talking to you, Chair Matthews, four of our trustees have not been through the course fee approval process, because it happens in January. So, here's the context. You, you may know that we previously determined that there will be no tuition increase for this year, which is great context for, for any kind of fee discussion. As the cover sheet that you have explains, the overall impact of the course fee revenue, it's revenue-neutral. And by the way, you'll notice that CFO Willsky's chair is vacant this evening, and he's with us online. So, he is, he is online and able to answer any questions. But here's the process. We, in setting the fees, we start in the fall, and it's coordinated by Financial Services, Don and his team. And all the academic areas monitor the costs of each course. And then the analysis is reviewed by the deans, the provost, and the CFO. Provost Welch and the deans and others are available this evening to answer any questions you have. But the general principle is that the course fees are only to cover costs. There's no revenue or additional quote-unquote profit built in. They're just to offset material costs or additional labor costs for staffing. You'll notice that some course fees in vocational occupational courses are quite high, and when you look through there. And that's given the additional equipment, the accreditation-based instructor-student ratios. And as you go through that list, you'll see many of Dean Berger's programs in HHS, Dental Hygiene, EMT, Paramedic. These are where the larger fees are. And you'll note, as Trustee Proctor did earlier, that some course fees are either decreasing or going away. Those courses aren't going away, but the course fee is. So, I did want to provide that context before we get there. And that's one thing I want to say about course fees. And everyone, the provost and they're able to answer questions when we get there. And then one last thing before we introduce new employees, Chair Matthews. In January, I work with the board, and I've been talking to Chair Matthews and my team to set specific goals for myself as president for the year 2025. We have a lot of goals in our strategic plan, but these are goals for me as CEO to work with you all on the board. They're meant to complement our current planning. And as before, I had a great conversation with the chair about these goals, and I've talked to my team. So here, you'll hear me talk about these, but this is sort of the formal unveiling of my personal goals for the year. First is, I'm going to work this year in 2025 to ensure that all of our college processes, procedures, and plans align with the LCC board policy. I think that alignment is pretty strong. We're going to be very intentional about it this year. Second, and I talked about this last year. My second goal is to make sure that we, as a college, understand the basic needs of LCC students. And that would include housing insecurity, food insecurity, needs for childcare, and student mental health. But finally, I will be setting a very formal goal, near and dear to my heart. If you read Inside Higher Ed today, I was quoted in an article about our very important work in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. My third goal is to sustain LCC's institutional commitment to diversity, equity, and belonging during the year 2025. So you hear me talking about these goals all year, but January is the time when I formally set those and communicate them. And then the last thing, Chair Matthews, is we do, we did hire some new employees. I'm not sure, are any of our new employees here this evening or on this list? Maybe not. But this is one of my favorite things, is we sit down in HR and have a new employee lunch. And many of these employees come and meet with me one-on-one in the office. It's always wonderful to invite new colleagues to join our faculty. And with that, Chair Matthews, that's my report. Happy to answer any questions. And the course fee questions maybe could come during consent agenda.
Onto the consent agenda. Holly, take a look, see if there are any items that you would like to remove from the consent agenda for discussion. Hearing none. Trustee Thomas?
Trustee Tom?
All right. Madam Chair, I would like to remove item number nine, 2025-2026 course fees.
Are there any other items, Holly, that you would like to remove from your consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items? B, board trustees, employees one and two. C, change order number one. And D, cooperative purchase number one.
Thank you, trustee. Thank you, trustee Proctor. Thank you.
Chair, I'm moving the remainder of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. So it's been moved by trustee Proctor and supported second by trustee Thomas to approve the consent agenda items with the exclusion of number eight. Any discussion? Ms. Duncan Calderon?
Noel Garcia.
Aye.
Terrence Frazier.
Aye.
Robert Proctor.
Aye.
Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Chatham Taylor.
Aye.
Angela Matthews.
Aye.
Ashana Thomas.
Motion carried. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda item number eight, 2025-2026 course fees? Thank you, trustee Proctor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Lavelle. It has been moved by trustee Proctor, second by trustee Lavelle, to approve the 2025-2026 course fees. Discussion? Trustee Thomas? Am I missing somebody? Okay, trustee Bailey?
So I, like I said previously, I have a college student myself, so it's only natural I ask this question about course fees. It's near and dear to me, but how often are course fees assessed? That's my first question. And then what department or classes typically has the highest fee increase? Just looking at the list, it looked like there were certain classes that were a bit higher than the others. So how is that really determined?
So we start the process in the fall and bring them to the board every January. The answer to your second question about which one would have the highest increases would be a case-by-case. Generally, the highest fees in aggregate are in the occupational programs and in the health areas. But as you can see, you see the existing fees and the proposed new ones. And if I could, I'd like to have Provost Welch kind of add a little bit to the, because there might be many answers to your second question, given the number of courses, but Provost Welch?
I agree with your comments in terms of HHS typically has the highest course fees, and that has to do with accreditation, equipment, and then they use microsections. So accreditation requires them to have one-to-five or one-to-eight ratio of instructor-to-student base. So that causes a course fee. They do look at it every year and make sure that we're not overcharging students. We only charge them for the education they receive. The last few years in tech careers, we've seen an increase in a number of the courses that use supplies that are hard to get now. And so those have drawn, caused the course fees to go up. So you'll see automotive, for instance, there's a large increase in those because of the product cost and the availability of those particular products.
And if I could add on to that answer, just one piece of evidence that we review them to make sure they're appropriate is the fact that you see some of them going down this evening. And the other thing I would point out, unlike a private or proprietary college, we don't have different tuition rates by program. So some of the programs that have smaller craft size accreditation mandates or large equipment fees, that's, those are built into course fees, and that's very common. That is actually the community college model for those kinds of programs.
Thank you. I was wondering, how is it that 40% could have no fees? But you can think of particularly arts and science classes, so your sociology, your psychology, those kind of courses typically don't have supplies that are built into it, and they'd just be instructor cost. There may be a small fee for a software program in those particular courses, but typically arts and science don't have any, outside of science courses don't have fees associated. Thank you.
Okay, Garci.
Yeah.
And then trustee Lavelle.
And so the pie chart that starts off on Attachment A here on page 38 shows the courses with no fees is 40%. Those are not indicated in the charts below, right?
Correct.
But everything else is?
Anything that has a fee that's changed should be in the tables that are listed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Trustee Lavelle.
Oh, and I'm actually got a question in regards especially one class I see on here, the like the drone maintenance, it's almost doubling. And so I'm just wondering, are there opportunities for the department to get like grants or funding that would help offset such cost increases? I see like it's going from like $300 to 450. Just wondering, what are things that we can do to help offset, you know, such substantial increases?
We have something called Perkins Funding, and we use Perkins Funding to pay for a lot of our equipment in the programs. This one, I'm going to ask Dean Dwyer to come up and explain why the fee doubled in there to help you better understand this. Thank you.
Hello. So the reason why our insurance was one of the reasons for our drone program going up. Another one was we were purchasing kits, drone kits, for our students to have. Because we always want to make sure that they have brand-new technology or supplies they're using instead of using stuff that's over and over and over. And they can take this home with them. These are little kits, these are little drones that you can have after the program here. So that was one of the reasons why, hey, you can take it home. It's yours.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And I know drones are a big thing. It's definitely an industry and an area that's starting to get a lot more attention. And there's a high demand and a high need for drone operators. And so we want to make sure it's accessible. So, thank you.
Yes? Trustee Proctor?
Probably shouldn't ask this. I think I know the answer, but want to make sure we're on the same page. Fees are different than what we charge to attend Lansing Community College, right? It's supplemental because of the nature of the equipment or supplies that go into the course. So it's not as though you come here and you don't pay anything if you take the right courses.
Additional discussions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan Calderon?
Ashana Thomas. Chatham Taylor.
Aye.
Terrence Frazier.
Aye.
Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Noel Garcia.
Aye.
Robert Proctor.
Aye.
Angela Matthews. Motion carried.
Moving on to monthly monitoring report, Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, Chair Matthews. And before I get to the two reports, let me thank the trustees for excellent questions on course fees. And if I could, let me brag about our team here. They knew that any one of these fees might be the subject of a question. So I want to thank the provost, all the deans for knowing these off the top of their head. And I'm really, really proud of this team for this kind of work because it is student-centric work. And I'll just point out again, some of these fees did decrease because we monitor to make sure they're appropriate. So, thank you. Great job, team. And thanks, Don. I know you're there. It would have answered if we needed you. Stay tuned for item B. Chair Matthews, trustees, the first item in the monthly monitoring report are the financial statements. CFO Willskey is on the WebEx if trustees have questions. But for the new trustees, we bring a set of monthly financials to every meeting. They're in the spirit of transparency in the packet. And what you will learn this year is that we are accustomed to winning awards for financial reporting and transparency. So if you have any questions, CFO Willskey and his team are here, but we bring the financials every month. And they're not for vote. They're just for you to see and ask questions.
Trustee Lavelle, and then trustee Proctor.
So let me just say, you are, we have a beautiful set of financial statements. I was very impressed. I want to go to the area. I just had a question as it relates to the P and L statement. There is a calculation in the last column, and it's looking at, I want to make sure I pull it up. So if we look at our operating expenses, adopted budget, and the actual expenses. But however, the column I'm asking about, and I just want to kind of a point of clarity around how it's calculated, it says percent point variance fiscal year 2025, percent of budget posted to fiscal year 2024, percent of actual, if, you can, someone could just help me?
Do you have a page number, trustee Lavelle?
Let's see. This same calculation is used on 69, yeah, 68 and 69.
Great. So, Don, I see that you're on the screen. Did you hear trustee Lavelle's question?
Yes, I did. Thank you for that question. That is calculated every month at that particular point in time. So we take the current fiscal year and look at the expenses and what percentage they are of the budget. We look at the prior actual fiscal year and look at the same period of time, the actual expenses compared to what was finally expended in last fiscal year. And the difference between those two percentages that you see on that schedule is what we use to define as a variance. In other words, are we proceeding basically at the relatively same pace as we did a year ago? That helps us predict year-end results. We go through a process internally. Every quarter, we send reports to every member of the executive leadership team and ask them to explain any variance in their division that's 3% or more. You'll also notice that there's also a narrative every month to the financial statements, which we also try to explain at a high level, the reason for such variances. And reporting to the board, we use a 5% variance figure in terms of what we report on, whether it's 5% plus or 5% minus.
Sure, I understand. So a first point of matter is, definitely want to make sure we notice anything that show three points higher variance. Is that correct?
The three-point variance is what we work with the individual members of the executive leadership on. Board policy requires us to report to the board on a 5% or more variance.
For instance, other revenues on page 68 shows 16.6?
Yes.
Okay.
That's fortunately one of the bright spots. When this year's budget was prepared, we weren't really sure what was going to happen with the Federal Reserve system and what was going to be happening with interest rates. And so we were conservative on that. Rates have not fallen until the last several months. And we were also fortunate enough to tie up some investments prior to rates dropping so that we're still getting the advantage of those rates. So we will be exceeding budget in terms of the interest income that we earn on the college's investments.
That's great news. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Willskey, happy new year.
Same to you, sir.
75, I think I may have figured, I sure, and it's the item under professional fees. Are you with me?
Yep.
Okay. So we spent $305 on interpreters at our last meeting. That's not my question. It's that grand total of 21,314. I could take the item above, which was under audit services, 21,009, and add the 3,005 and come up with that total. But it doesn't seem to compute. Am I missing something?
Okay, again, which, what page number are you on, trustee Proctor?
Page 75. We have audit services. I take that to be professional fees.
Correct.
The total is $21,009. And then we have another category called professional fees. And the only entry under that is for ASL interpreters at the September meeting. And I understand what happened there. But we get a grand total for professional fees of 21,314 under that item. Something just doesn't seem to fit.
A little hard to read right now. But the 21,000 is the subtotal for all of the professional, professional fees. You know, I have a little difficulty seeing the, on my end right now. But we'll double-check the numbers just to make sure that there wasn't a, what sometimes happens is there's a formula error as we accumulate information. And, but we'll double-check on that and definitely get back to you, sir.
Adding parentheses after audit services as a professional fee, and that fits for me.
Fact-check me, and your teammates who are here could fact-check me as well. The, you have this document in color. The green bars are category subtotals. So if you look up the grand total of institutional expenses at the top, 449 is a grand total of everything that came before it. And that's the same thing for audit services and professional fees. So trustee Proctor is correct. The math of 21,314 is the sum of 21,009 and 305. But all of the green bars are category subtotals. And I'm getting the, I'm getting the thumbs up from your, from your team, Don. I think it's
It's kind of under control.
Two subcategories. Excellent. Thank you.
I'm good. I knew they weren't in there.
Are there any further questions for CFO Willskey or Dr. Robinson with regards to this monthly financial statement?
Thank you, Chair Matthews. Next, under monthly monitoring reports, and this is particularly for our two brand-new trustees, this is their first meeting. You may have seen this other than meetings. On page 87, there's a cover sheet that explains our monthly police department report. And I want to say what I often say about this report. This is a national best practice in transparency in policing. Our police department issues a citizen Our police department issues a citizen contact receipt for interactions they have with the community, particularly when they have to take an action. And much of this discussion and activity can be traced back to two things, first, our Equity Action Plan, but also the arrival of our very dynamic chief, Chief Gaines, who instituted this practice of not only collecting data about interactions with the public, but also monthly reporting. So, you will see this every month, it's a list of interactions our law enforcement officers have had. They don't have to be discussed every month, but it is one of these things where it's open for everyone to see, it's in the public board meeting packet, everyone watching at home can see this. And often trustees have questions about our law enforcement activities based on this report. My top-line message about this is, this is a best-in-class practice of transparency in law enforcement. So, with that, this particular month activity sheet is pretty short. Our department heads are usually, are here to answer questions, but that's my spiel about what this is, particularly for the two new trustees, it is a real point of pride for LCC.
I do. I concur, it's having a background in law enforcement to be this transparent is amazing, and with that comes, of course, some scrutiny as well, right? And so, I'm looking at this report, chief, and, you know, looking at the numbers here, and when you look at self-initiated or officer-initiated activities, you indicate that there's two of them here, with a possibility of larceny from the marketplace, and there's two subjects there, but really, your traffic stops are self-initiated as well. And so, that's one, that's most eye-catching to me is, you start looking at the traffic violations, which are self-initiated, you can make the stop, you don't have to make the stop, that's discretion. And most of these subjects being pulled over are black-racked American, and that's why we do this, right? That's why you're, just to, to see if there's any concerns.
Right.
Is this concerning?
No, it's not. So, one of the reasons that we put those citizen contacts in play when I got here was specifically for things like this, because we know that there's going to be months where you may have aberrations. And if you look back on our past months of issuing these reports, you will see that it's not that lopsided. But the purpose, one of the main purposes of those citizen contacts is so that I, when I do this report, can look at those very closely and see if we have any patterns, any sort of police tactics that may point to targeting and things like that. And so, based on everything that I've seen since I've been here, I've got a pretty good group of guys here, and I think this particular month has just kind of worked out that way. There's not that many stops, so if this was like a normal month for us, where you might see 30 bar stops, I'm sure that probably ends up evening out.
And I think you answered a question that, my next question is that you do follow this follow-up to these numbers?
Every month, every month, yep.
Trustee Lavelle?
Well, just a point of education for me, can you help me to understand, is this across all of our various campuses, or how do you all, and also, how do you all kind of delineate yourself from, say, City of Lansing, and what areas you patrol versus what areas they patrol?
Yeah, so for the first part of your question, wherever our officers may go to answer a call or service, or if they are out at one of our other buildings, just doing check-ins or patrols, if they come in contact with an individual out there, basically anytime there is an engagement of any kind that is investigatory, one of those citizen contacts gets filled out, and then it gets turned into a supervisor at the end of the shift, he reviews it for any, you know, obviously, any mistakes that might be on the ticket that may have to go back for correction, but also for the same things that I'm looking at, and then I kind of have that final review at the end of the month. So, basically, anytime one of our officers is doing anything investigatory, it will end up on this, this report. I think I remember the second part of your question was in terms of jurisdiction?
Yeah, it's like right off of Capitol here, so is this an area you patrol?
We do, we patrol, we have a, first, we have a really good relationship with LPD, we have a pretty good understanding, they understand that pretty much anything on campus or the immediate area around campus, normally, we will, we will deal with that. Of course, we don't have all the resources they do, so sometimes we will have to call them and tap in for resources and things like that, but, yeah, and sometimes they, if we see them out on a car stop and they don't have any backup with them, we'll stop and back them up. I mean, it's sort of a partnership that's been in place long before I got here, we've just kind of strengthened those relationships with our surrounding jurisdictions, but that's basically ours. Yep. You're welcome. Congratulations, by the way. That will be.
Okay, question, so if you do start seeing a pattern, do you have a plan in place?
Yes, we do.
And how long would it take for you to, you know, kind of jump on that or whatever?
You mean in terms of discovering a pattern or in terms of following?
Right, discovering it when it starts to look like it, like-
Well, I've brought things to my supervisor's attention relatively quickly. You know, I come from a pretty big police department, so I'm pretty good at sort of spotting those kinds of little activities, so it wouldn't take long. And I don't want to go into the whole details of the plan, but trust me, I have one in place.
Thank you.
Are there questions?
Thank you, chief. Chief is always available to answer these questions, and again, an example of measuring and acting on information that we correct to live out our values at the college. So, those are the two monthly monitoring reports, Chair Matthews.
Thank you. Next, we're going to policy development, trustee Proctor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item under policy development before you, you might think this has been around forever, it almost has, it started almost a year ago. It's a concern raised by the President with regard to communications coming to the Board of Trustees, it may contain a complaint that with, which is within his purview to resolve. So, we tried to craft a policy that deals directly with getting those communications to their proper source. So, this is on for first read, I direct your attention to the cover sheet, which is on page 93, and then you have the proposed policy statement in red. I'm prepared to answer any questions about that, and the last item is my going through 1.7 point, well, 1.7 as to each of those subsections to indicate why I think we need a new section called 1.710. Dr. Robinson and I met recently to go over the proposal, I think we've come to an accord, legal counsel's been involved with me over the course of the year, and we've had several iterations of this. So, to the extent you may have some ideas about what is suggested as a policy on this subject, let me know. Again, it's on for first read. I think we made substantial progress. It's going to be our executive assistant liaison who will be monitoring those contacts that come in through the board. Somebody has to be, in fact, the gatekeeper, so the responsibility is on her. If it's directed to the trustees individually, she's not opening that, it goes direct, that's your personal mail. Anything else that contains a complaint, she's going to identify, whether it's a concern that is addressed by the President, she'll contact the Chair of the Board and send those communications directly to the President and Chair. If it's anything other than that, we'll deal with it as a board if it's within our purview.
Moving on to linkage planning implementation, community linkage to Chair's report, colleagues, you will see before you that there is a conflict of interest disclosure statement, you'll also see where you would need to sign that conflict of interest disclosure statement, and you will need to get that back to Ms. Benita as soon as possible. The other attention I want to bring to you is that you have a folder in, in front of you, and it has all of the information with regards to the upcoming NLS conference. Please, ma'am, and please, sir, keep that with you, because all pertinent information regarding NLS, which is happening in a couple of weeks, is in this folder. Moving on now to board reorganization, just for a little bit of information for those of you who are with us and online, every two years, the board does a reorganization, and we do that at the January meeting, so that is what's going to take place on tonight. So, with that, the first order of business for the board reorganization is the election of officers.
Madam Chair, I have a motion I'd like to introduce.
Go ahead, trustee Garcia.
I move that trustee Angela Matthews serve as Chair, trustee Terrence Frazier serve as Vice Chair, trustee Robert Proctor serve as Treasurer, and trustee LaShonda Thomas serve as Secretary to the Board of Trustees at Lansing Community College.
Okay. So, moved by trustee Garcia for the election of board officers as aforementioned, if there are a second.
I'll start. Chair Matthews. Chair Matthews, I second.
So, it has been moved by trustee Garcia, and second by trustee Taylor for the election of the board officers. Angela Matthews as Chair, Terrence Frazier as Vice Chair, Robert Proctor as Treasurer, and LaShonda Thomas as Secretary. Any discussions? Hearing none, this Duncan called the row.
Angela Matthews.
Aye.
Robert Proctor.
Aye.
LaShonda Thomas, Terrence Frazier.
Aye.
Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Noel Garcia.
Yes.
Chatham Taylor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Moving on to new committee appointments, there are several appointments to be made, however, on tonight, we will just deal with just two of those areas of appointments. The first area is the Audit Committee, and I would ask that Treasurer Robert Proctor, trustee Proctor would serve as the Chair of the Audit Committee. I would like to ask LaShonda, trustee LaShonda Thomas, to serve, continue to serve on that committee as well. And then, I would like to ask if trustee Hope Lavelle would consider serving on that committee. Trustee Proctor as Chair.
Are you asking me if I'd be willing, sir? I'd be like, ah, chair.
Come on. Trustee Thomas?
Yes, madam.
Chair, trustee Lavelle?
Yes, madam, Chair.
Thank you. The next appointment is for the Association of Community College Trustees, and this is a vital role with, on that organization, and this person will need to come up to speed with regards to it, but I'm sure that they can. I would like to appoint as voting delegate of the Association of Community College Trustees, trustee LaShonda Thomas, are you willing to take that appointment?
Yes, madam, Chair.
Thank you. For the rest of the committees, I will be coming back to this board, my colleagues, in February, and making some appointments at that particular meeting. Moving on now to unfinished business, you have in the front of you as well, our planning calendar, it goes from February of 2025 all the way through December. If you have any questions about that, let Ms. Benita know, you will see in the red that there needs to be, RSVP is required for those particular events that is happening at Lansing Community College. Otherwise, this is our calendar for the 2025 year.
Madam Chair, there is a calendar that's in, I think it's governance policy, that has, it's more intense, it talks about when we do the President's evaluation, my evaluation, when we receive different reports, I'll send that out to the entire board, so that will need to be on the February meeting agenda. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
I would just like to thank Ms. Thompson for this calendar, it helps so much when we go to time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business, seeing that there is none, and now moving on to public comment, if anyone has signed up, please, ma'am, please, sir, you have three minutes with regards to public comment, you may address the board here at the podium, and then I'll also ask, is there anyone that's signed up? Patrick Burchelley?
Okay. I didn't have anyone.
Do you have anyone signed up? Okay, I see that you're moving, did you sign up?
Didn't sign up.
You sure can, yeah, yeah, you can sign.
I was so excited today because of all of our excitement that began. Okay. Good evening. My name is Eva Menafi, and I, my public comment today is actually to say, welcome aboard to our brand-new trustees. I am the President of Lansing Community College Faculty Union, MAHI, so on behalf of the rest of my executive committee and all of our faculty, we welcome you, and I'm looking forward to working with you all for the next year or as long as your term lasts, so just welcome aboard, and I'm glad you're all here.
Thank you. Moving on to board comment, this is the point in time where my colleague, if you have a comment, this is the time where you can make your comment. Trustee Thomas?
I got you, Patrick, relax. I would like to just say, I didn't get to do the Foundation's report, so I just wanted to let everyone know that the Foundation Scholarship Review has been extended to February 3rd, and also, if you would like to review the scholarship applications, feel free to contact Kathy Zell to do so, I'm sure they would be happy to have all hands on deck. And I wanted to make sure that we knew that there was a donor that made a donation of $108,000, let's give it up. And it will be used, it will be used for 72 students who will receive $1,500 each, so that's a great, yes, incredible. So, I wanted to say that, especially with the deadline being February 3rd, and also, I'm grateful to be here with my new colleagues, welcome, 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 and thank you, I look forward to serving with you.
Trustee Thomas, just a clarification, you said February 3rd is when the scholarship applications are due, is that correct? Okay. And is the Foundation still looking for persons to review? Okay, thank you. Trustee Lavelle?
Well, I would just like to say, it is just truly such an honor and a pleasure to be a part of the LCC star team, and I just want to thank all of you for all of your hard work and everything that you all do to make sure that every student, every family that steps into LCC has just the best experience possible, and I just look forward to working with you all to just, you know, keep that mission and that dream alive.
Trustee, trustee Taylor?
I just wanted to say, sitting right here is just a surreal moment for me, it's definitely been a journey, but I'm just so appreciative to sit here and be able to work with my fellow colleagues, and just enjoy the journey and help our students get to where they're trying to go, you know, make them very successful, so thank you, thank you guys so much.
Okay, I want to say, great work to trustee Proctor, Dr. Robinson. Okay, I want to say great work to trustee Proctor, Dr. Robinson, and Ms. Duncan for working together on this new board bylaw. It was an extensive conversation that went, you know, as long as it should have so that we can make sure that it is beneficial to both our president as well as the board of trustees. So with that, I really want to applaud you because this was a, it was a journey. And then also I would like to echo what has been said. Welcome, welcome, welcome to Lansing Community College Board of Trustees. I do believe that we will continue the work that we're doing. We will continue to, you know, advocate for our students, the faculty and the staff. We will continue to be high functioning as we are. And we also will have a little bit of fun as we're doing that as well. So with that, and then I also want to thank you, colleagues, for your trust in the elected officers of this board. We take it very seriously, I know. And that we will represent this board to the absolute best of our ability while we're in this setting as well as on the outside. With that, is there, we don't have a closed session. So is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee, by trustee Thomas, is there a second? Vice Chair Frazier. So it has been moved by trustee Thomas and second by vice chair Frazier that we adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none, we are adjourned.